Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the 2008, or 2008, February 8, 2022 regular board meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and start out with the invitation issued by Ms. Sands.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to come together tonight. I pray that you'll be with us and guide us in wisdom and the decisions that we make regarding the children of, and teachers and staff at our schools. I pray that you protect the community and that you give all of us guidance as we move forward in unity and the betterment of our community. I thank you for allowing us to be part of an important organization here with our schools and that we always carry out to the best of our ability what is best for those children. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Sands. We'll jump straight into the spotlight on Glen County mistake.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Roseanne Cruz, your Riley Lutson, we have a $5,000 grant from Hello Goodbye from her, for her nonprofit, Riley's Souls for Souls, to provide more than 100 pairs of shoes to students in our school system. Tonight Riley will talk about why she created this nonprofit and its mission for 2022.
Hello, my name is Riley Lutson and I'm a freshman at Brunswick High School. I'm the founder of Riley's Souls for Souls. When I was six years old, I was watching TV one day when I saw a young girl that wanted to collect shoes and give them to the less fortunate, and it really inspired me to do something like that. One day I had a moment with God and he told me that I should go for it. So after about six months of convincing my parents about my vision, we came up with what is now Riley's Souls for Souls. After eight years in becoming a nonprofit, we have collected just shy of 14,000 pairs of shoes. When I, in 2014, when I was seven, we started collecting shoes in the spring and the beginning of summer. We collected over 550 pairs of shoes in just a few months, and now we needed somewhere to take them. A friend of ours from our church put us in contact with Mr. Bill Barker, who is over the Appalachian Bible Ministry, which serves the poverty belt from North Carolina to the mountains of West Virginia and helps families throughout this area. I know after we collected these shoes that I really wanted to keep doing it year round. What began as just collecting shoes in the spring and summer became a great year-round collection of shoes. We have shoe drop-off boxes throughout Glen County and other areas through the state that help us collect the shoes, as well as people that contact us through our Facebook page and drop off shoes with us too. Over the last eight years, we have delivered shoes to four states, which are Florida, Georgia, North Carolina, and West Virginia. We have also crossed the ocean and have donated shoes in Honduras. We collect shoes year-round and distribute them to disaster-hit areas and also to those locally and abroad. We also serve in our local community and help other missions in our area, such as Mountain to Sea Ministries on St. Simons. We delivered over 2,000 pairs of shoes to those who were hit by Hurricane Michael in the Florida Panhandle and over 5,000 pairs of shoes to Richwood, West Virginia. It's a small coal mining and lumber community that was hit by a major flood in the summer of 2016. We have collected and donated shoes to some of the Glen County schools throughout communities and schools. We are able to do this with a $5,000 grant we've received from Hello Goodbye here in Brunswick. We are trying to put shoes on the kids who are less fortunate and who need to know that there are people who love and support them, even if it means putting a simple pair of shoes on their feet. We are still working on spending all the grant money to make sure that every kid who needs shoes will have a brand-new pair. One pair of shoes is a life that we can change to help and let them know that we do care and love them. We will keep doing this and grow as long as God keeps telling me to keep the charity running. Follow us on our Facebook page, Riley's Souls for Souls, to keep up with updates, drop-off locations, and ways to donate and help us with our mission, which is to elect and distribute as many shoes as we can to those in need. Thank you for giving me this wonderful opportunity to speak to you today and tell me my story, my vision, and where we are heading in the future. The drop-off locations are Zachary's Seafood, College of Coastal Georgia, Coastal Computer Consultants, and Duckworth Tire on Altamont. Thank you. I brought with me my mom and my dad.
So Riley, you've been doing this for how many years, you say?
I started when I was seven, eight years.
Right, that's awesome. Well, congratulations. I remember when you guys first started that and you came and talked about it and that's pretty cool that you're still carrying on with it. And actually, I mean, that's a lot of shoes when you think about it. So we're very, very proud of you and keep up the good work. I know your parents are extremely proud as well. So keep doing what you're doing and making a difference. That's pretty awesome.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you all so much. Let us know how we can help. We appreciate it. All right, well, we'll move down to the citizens address the board portion of the meeting. Before we get started, I'll read a preamble. Board of Education has adopted a policy that permits certain citizens under certain circumstances to address the board on a variety of topics of general concern and operations of our schools. We welcome visitors to the board meetings and are interested in hearing from the taxpayers and patrons of our school system. We have a few simple rules for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board must sign this roster. Each person is limited to five minutes, and the public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed 30 minutes. Any citizen who has a specific complaint involving an employee must first address this issue with the superintendent, and if not resolved, then may request a speech to the board. However, certain matters involving personnel and students must be heard in a closed session. The superintendent will inform you of whether or not this complaint is one that should be heard or referred to in executive session with the board. By signing this sheet, you are agreeing to abide by these rules. And our first participant tonight is Ms. Theowana, Theowanza Brooks.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to address the following concerns within our school district. It's a shame that we're constantly given false information regarding the COVID numbers from those who are supposed to have our children's best interest at heart. Without having a mask mandate in place, every day we're jeopardizing our teachers, staff, and students. We have lost a few teachers due to COVID. With all the funding that we have received from PPE, there isn't any excuse to why we can't provide the teachers with the necessary items that they need to protect our students in the classroom without them coming out of their own pockets. Although we are in the midst of a pandemic and there is a shortage everywhere, there is no excuse to why the supervisor over the custodians cannot assist in helping clean these schools and get them prepared for our children, instead of putting all the work on their custodians who are already dealt with a heavy workload on a daily basis. The mistreatment that comes from the custodian department, like the individuals, are like individuals who are working on a slave ship for pennies. Let me not forget to mention, after working over 300 and something days cleaning these schools and trying to keep them protected for our students, they're, on Christmas, they receive a piece of candy to thank them for their hard work and Merry Christmas. That piece of candy can be replaced with those CARE Act funds that have been received to incentivize these custodians for their hard work throughout the school year. If we can't provide our teachers with a safer teaching environment and our custodians with the necessary things that they need, how do you expect them to be able to properly clean and educate our children in this district without fear of them losing their jobs in retaliation because they come forward about their concerns to their administrators? Subs are also becoming harder to find in our area due to only receiving twice a year pay that doesn't even add up to $500 after taxes. Some are upset because they feel like they come in and fill these seats of teachers who are sick while putting their own lives at risk for the small amounts that they receive. I feel they need to receive more pay a day or receive STEM pay throughout the year as the others are receiving. In closing, I want to add that a few weeks ago, a custodial hiring card was passed out, which was not issued by the Glen County Board of Education, with the African-American woman picture holding a broom, a mop, and cleaning items, which were only given out to African-Americans for employment. I find it distasteful, disrespectful, disheartening, and prejudiced because 98% of your custodians look just like me. You have one Latino and one white. I've done my homework. Also, for a member of the school board to think that all black women are worth is pushing a broom and mop is very degrading. But let me add that we do a phenomenal job at cleaning, but that's not all we're limited to. And to find that no action has been taken, because I've also done my homework on that, it concerns me. The matter is that we were led to believe that this person was suspended to also find out that he's been at a planned men's retreat in Honey Creek with his church. I will continue to show up and advocate for these people until there is a change. Thank you for hearing my concerns.
Ladies and gentlemen, up next is Ms. Oprah Hall, Orfa Hall, I'm sorry.
Good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
As a reliable, dedicated substitute teacher for the last 18 years in Glen County, I am here with a grievance. I've heard all about the bonuses for the teachers, the custodians, and everybody else. No mention of giving the substitute a living wage. So I'm here today to find out what is going on, when are we going to get representation, and who is responsible for looking out for the substitute teachers? Because we are tired, we have been apart, a support sys, part of the support system, keeping the school going, running smoothly, and yet we like, we are invisible. So am I going to get a feedback or do I just air my grievance?
This is time for you to speak, but we will, we can have someone respond to you after the meeting and, or, you know, in the upcoming days or whatnot with any kind of information that you may need.
Okay. The next thing that I have, some health issue. I got in a wreck four years ago, a van slammed into the back of me at the stoplight, and I've been having a lot of aches and pain on the left side, my neck and my hair. And I tried to, every time I get sick at school, they would tell me to clock out and go home, go and see the doctor. When I clock out and go home, I do not get paid for that. Then I have a lot of allergic reaction. The hand sanitizer make my throat bleed, and I'm, I still have to go to work because the Board of Education said that I'm not an employee. The Department of Labor said I am an employee. So I've just been going around in circles, bleeding every afternoon I leave school. Well, some of the students and some of the teachers, they've been working with me by using soap and water so I won't get ill. Who's looking out for the substitute teachers? That's my question for the day. Anytime they're calling me, I'm there to help out because I know the teachers need help. Our children, after the lockdown, they have been falling behind. I'm there trying to help them to catch back up. I've been giving 18 years of service to my community with an $8.68 pay, $8,068 an hour. For 18 years, I've been giving my best to this community. And when we are looking out for someone to cover our backs, there's no one. The lawyer up on us, there's no one. Instead of helping us, the lawyer up on us, substitute teachers. So I am pleading today for someone to look into our case. They're asking for new hires, and they're not taking care of who they have already. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you, ma'am. That brings us to number five, approval of the agenda. We entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Urrigan, second by Mr. Halsey. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, seven, zero. Consent agenda items. We will do number seven, number eight, number nine B, numbers nine C. It'll be nine D1. Most of these items were discussed and, or all of them were discussed at length in the work session. So I will list most of them. If you want to take some off, we'll talk about it from back on. But I guess D3, D4, D6, D7, D8, D9. Madala, do you need any thoughts? We'll leave that one off. So the nine E as well. So I will read those back real quick before we take a vote on it. Number seven is the approval of the January 6 work session meeting minutes. Number eight is approval of the January 11 regular board meeting minutes. Nine B is the field trips. Nine C is facility committee, which has the GUD report. Nine D1 is approval of the financial report for October, November, and December of '21. Nine D3 is approval of the annual computer refresh for Glen Middle, Jane Makin, Edwood Middle, and Rizley Middle. Nine D4 is approval of the computer surplus for the middle schools as well. Nine D6 is approval of the annual renewal of the Microsoft enrollment for education subscription. Seven is approval of the Lego education. Eight is approval of the purchasing classroom and office furniture for Golden Isles Elementary. Number nine is approval for the Coastal Pines Memorandum of Understanding. And then nine E is the policy committee.
Can I just ask for clarification on E?
Yes, ma'am.
Nine E, oh, are we tabling the policy revision that we talked about?
It's got to sit. We're going to leave it for, for the next.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't voting on that.
So at the next meeting, we'll approve that.
Okay, thanks.
Any additions or deletions on the consent agenda items? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for acceptance of the consent agenda as presented.
Make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Gibbons.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Edgy. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Bring this down to, sir, personnel. We're going to do that in the back. Okay. Um, so, which I guess we could, we don't have to do personnel right here. It's fine. I've already, I got one thing anyway, so we'll do it. Okay, I'm sorry. Let's see, nine D2, which would be, let's get one, let's see, sorry. D2, which would be the Certificate of Board of Education, which is by Ms. President.
Right. These are forms required by the state. These are the projects that we get state funds for. The first one is for the Glen Academy Phase 1 and 2 renovation modifications of Sydney and Science, and it just states that all bills have been paid. And then the second one is for the re-roof at the Glen Academy PE gym.
Okay. Any questions on that?
If we approve.
Motion by Mr. Halsey for approval.
Second that.
Second by Mr. Edgy. Any discussion? Any questions? All right, all those in favor? Keep riding, rolling down to D5, approval of retention stipends. Did we just review that so everyone understands?
Right. The Dr. Spence and cabinet would like to request that the board look at giving retention stipends for several groups of our employees that we are having an extremely hard time keeping positions filled. Those positions that we would like to do on a monthly basis are typically your monthly employees, like your bus drivers, your bus aides, your custodians, and your food service assistants, and your paraproses. We would like to give them $200 a month in the middle of the month, now through July, and then in August, a $500 retention stipend for returning for the school year. For teachers, we would like to give them a signing retention stipend to be given in August when they return. Those stipends, retentions, would come out of CARES Act. Our auditors are telling us that if you can prove that you have a hard time retaining positions, you can use CARES Act money for retention stipends. Dr. Spence would also like to give our other staff that are non-administrative, like no directors, no coordinators, a $1,500 retention stipend for turning, returning in August also. That would come out of general fund. So the CARES Act would cost about 2.7 million, and the general fund cost would be a little over half a million.
This is on, this is on top of the stipend that the governor has promised to teachers and that the raises that the governor's promised for that.
Right. So we haven't got clarification yet as to which positions he's funding, but he has said he wants to give a one-time supplement to teachers this year out of the FY22 budget of $2,000 and a $1,000 supplement to, he listed several different categories out of this year's budget. And next year, he's promising a $2,000 raise for teachers. You know, he promised $5,000 when he ran, and he did three two years ago, and now he wants to do 2,000 to make up for the difference that he promised. And that is a permanent raise to the state Siree schedule. And $1,000 for bus drivers and food service because they have state Siree schedules. So I haven't gotten really any details on either one of those yet as far as the exact when we're getting it, when we can give it to the employees, and who's supposed to get it, but waiting on that information.
It's also important to note that the reason we're giving the teachers the retention stipend in August is because they're contracted employees, and so their contract will begin in August. So they're with us the rest of the time, and then when they come back, that's the idea behind the retention stipend, they're coming back. And then the custodians and bus drivers are not, cafeteria workers are not contracted employees. They're tomorrow. And so that's why we're giving them the retention stipend. Well, we would like to.
I think it's a great idea, as far as helping out with that, not only from the general fund, but from the CARES Act as well. So is there any questions on, is everybody kind of clear on what we're proposing?
I make a motion that we approve the retention stipend.
Circle.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Madala, second by Ms. Gibbons. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion three, seven, zero. Thank you, Ms. President. All right, that brings us all the way down to executive session. I'll entertain a motion for executive session on land legal personnel.
Tribunal appeal.
Tribunal appeal as well.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Urrigan.
I'll second.
Unanimous motion. Second by Mr. Edgy. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, set six, twenty. Unanimous at six point three.
Motion to go back in open session made by Mr. Halsey, second by Mr. Edgy. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous at seven eleven, Ms. Britt.
Seven eleven.
Seven eleven.
I make a motion we approve the personnel as recommended.
All right. Motion by Mr. Madalla.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Samms. All those in favor? It's unanimous, seven zero. Entertaining a motion for the improvement of the comp settlement.
Same move.
Motion by Dr. Jurgen. Seconded by Ms. Gibbons. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry.
She's unanimous.
It is.
I didn't.
No, I'm voting against it.
I tell you what. All those in favor of the motion for the comp settlement? So, five. All against? Motion carries.
No offense, Andy.
Motion carries five to two. Okay. Entertaining a motion for adjournment?
Same move.
Motion by Dr. Jurgen, seconded by Ms. Gibbons. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous at seven twenty.
Look for that one.
Thank you.